Recording.
I'm at the gas station.
Did you have Daniel with them?
I don't know, I just saw him over here. Not too long ago.
Okay. Well, I have, I have six o'clock.
Yep. Six o'clock, we'll call a meeting to order. If there's no injections, I will spend some budget. And then, as soon as got the roll.
Yeah, I just make sure.
Alright.
Sorry.
No problem.
I'm good now, we're good. I'm good.
We're recording.
Yes, we're recording among, among.
Alright. With approval of the agenda, please.
All approve the agenda.
Motion on the second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. On to whole business.
Uh, okay, I'm just going to try to go down this line here. I know it's that, so I don't miss anything. Um, I met with Stephen Rose last week. And we went through some preliminary bid opening dates. Um, so that we could go backwards in time because we have to advertise twice. And our first date was January twentieth. Which we'd advertise, you know, mid-December and late December. Early January. Um, if we went that route. And then, we also picked a date of February third, these are both Thursdays. Um, February third would be the Thursday prior to the February council meeting. And these are for the openings. The reason we picked two dates and we haven't nailed on one specific yet is that, um, he has a listing of, like he stated at the last meeting, some contract, some kind of construction companies he'd like to make sure that the bids get to, but he's trying to determine which is better to do it early or to wait a little bit. And that's why we picked, we were, put a February date in there too. Because your, your construction companies are gonna have every March, April, May, March, April, May, to like get everything rolling and order all their product and and what we don't know is having an early bid date, if that's gonna affect an overall bid price or not. So he's going to pick a couple of brains. Tom Tessier from Cross Anderson's for one, three, four, it's also maybe that works there. Just to kinda say, you know, are we gonna hurt ourselves by, you know, having that inflative, potentially inflated costs of labor and materials for those months not starting? By doing this early versus maybe waiting till March. Um, Steve is in the mindset that by doing it early, we'll have more people that will have time to put the bids in and really start looking at the project. But he just wants to field that out with a couple of his contacts before we mail one right down.
And what? How wide are we going with the advertising?
Um, well, we're only required to do it in the American, but we have decided to do it in the Pioneer. Which because the Pioneer is a Fargo-based company and they also own the Beard publication. I suggested going in the Fargo Forum too, and he said he really doesn't see that as a benefit. Because they all are the same publication and they're all owned. But what he's gonna do besides that is this list of possible bidders that he gave me, he's going to make sure he gets it into their hands specifically. Um, he has listed Cross Anderson Construction Engineers. Um, Fox Construction, they're out of Grand Rapids, they bid on the liquor store. Norrison Construction, Bradbury Stam, which I think he said is down in southern Minnesota. Well, St. Cloud. And then Zeta out of the Midgee. That's six. Um, so he's definitely gonna make sure that they get it. That should give us a pretty broad, I think one of these is out of Fargo too. A pretty broad array of bids.
I know there's been some floating around that Stephen's planning on retiring.
Mm-hmm.
He going to be our?
He's still going to, yeah. He's going to be our architect through the bid process at that point, whoever takes over for him. He'll make sure the handoff is, is right. He's not gonna just say, done and done.
Good.
He's too, he's, he's in it too much for him to do that. And I, I, the relationship we've, we've created and named with him, I don't think that's gonna be his. Especially like the other couple of projects that he's worked on. The liquor store, the reconstruction project, or the redevelopment project, he's not just gonna drop it. I mean, I've heard this from other people where, you know, people retire from Woodset, but they don't retire from Woodset. They have an engineer who helped Steve, um, start looking at the redevelopment project. And he's, hasn't officially worked for him for over a year and has a place on the right block. He just comes back and helps and he's still gonna help him. So I, I imagine, I imagine Steve's gonna be like that. Especially if Woodset can't find a new architect place, you know?
He's gonna have to change his soul members, that's all we're having.
Well, there's that too. So, um, I hope to hear something by our council meeting to give you guys an adequate because the dates that I have to get things in the paper for that first open date would be December eighteenth and January first. So, and Woodset has to put that bid document together, so I have that um, to give to the publications, so it's, it's advertisement is correct. So, oh, I should, I should know something about six. Um, the next thing that I have on this project is, I wanted to start looking since we were working on uh, enterprise fund budgets, I wanna work on the, the city cash contribution um, out of pocket, if you will. And where that lies and where it's all coming from, just to give a good, clear picture to how much we're in for above and beyond whatever the bid comes in. Because, you know, overall, the project is looking at, you know, we can borrow one, one point six five five. The city's contribution is two hundred, almost two hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars, so the whole project is one point nine. We can only borrow up to one point six, so we want our bids to be on the low side of one five or the high side of one four. So that, or one one, you know?
I agree with that.
But, but what the city needs to understand is minus the contingency percentage. Because we don't know how much of that contingency we would end up really having to spend. The legal fees, the closing costs, the, the out-of-pocket, you know, construction interest. Um, all the architect's fees that we've been paying and will continue to pay when to meet our goals are still ours to pay regardless of what the bid for the materials and labor comes out to. You know, um, just because we can borrow one point six doesn't mean USDA's can give it to us so that our out-of-pocket is less. Okay? They still expect us to pay that two seventy-nine. So, this sheet that I provided to you guys is just my, my calculations, if you will, based off of the bid sheet. Um, how much we still have to pay with Seth and how much we've already paid. Um, other things that are out of pockets that are not included in USDA loan are things like, but we'd have to pay Paul then in communications to run all our wiring. When y'all, our data is ready, our phone, all of that. Um, our FFNE, that's out of pocket too. Which, you know, we can make that as little or as much as we want. And it's, you know, fixtures, it's appliances, it's furniture, it's window coverings, it's that type of stuff, right? Um, but, things like our contingency. They only put down five percent based on that loan amount, that's still eight grand. That would be our responsibility. And originally, when Stephen was working on the document for USDA, he, they put eight percent down. Make the numbers work. Brought it down to five, well, that really kind of depends on where the bid comes out. The last thing on my list on the spreadsheet is the cost of issuance bonding. So there's a little bit of legal fees that we'd be paying. Our city attorney to close the loan with USDA. And then, um, the construction interest. The construction interest of twenty-three thousand eight fifty-nine, I have factored into next year's water and sewer budget. So if you look on my spreadsheet, you follow to the right-hand side, I have remaining left to pay general fund contribution and utility contribution, and I've broken an hole. So you can kinda get a little bit of an idea of what each of these responsibilities would be. Will you take the equipment out of the, out of this spreadsheet? Because we're gonna go for another community development grant, like we did for the Skid steer for some of that equipment. We're not factoring that into this. And you take out the contingency and add the interest, you can kinda see where what responsibility we have left to pay.
Yeah, we are eighty thousand.
Yeah. So right now, um, I'm thinking your utility should take over about sixty percent of the contribution, which is a little more than what I've done already with, with Seth's architect's fees in the past year. I've been doing it more sixty percent on the general fund and forty percent on the utility. And that is not something we can levy toward. So if I leave it that way, the city's gonna have to start taking that forty percent now out of, like, the reserve's account. Some savings, you guys look at my fund balance report. Gonna have to start coming out of things like the general fund reserves, can't take that out of mixers, it's gonna be at all. You guys, follow me?
Oh, I, I, gotcha.
Okay. Um, as it pertains to the utility contribution, because we're not completely done doing the enterprise funds. We could consider taking the utility contribution out of the utilities reserve accounts. There's a public works reserve fund, there's a, there's a sewer maintenance fund, there's a water sinking fund. Those are all reserve accounts that we depreciate and put money into. And we've done it in the past, but we've done it in the past with the, with the mindset that we're gonna pay ourselves back. And we did that with the Summit Main project. Because PFA gave us the money, we were allowed to. Well, we're not gonna get this back, so I want you guys to understand that, whatever we pay is gone.
Are we building that up so we can do more sewer work?
We, yeah, we depreciate for both the water and the sewer account each year. Um, and that's what that money should be going to. But, I just wanna make sure the city people really understands how much more it still has to pay. So if, if, if these bids come in and we're really happy with those bids, we are still responsible for that dollar, no matter where the bids come out. The only money we're saving is USDA money, not ours. You know? Questions? Okay, that leads me to, um, oh, that, that, is the water and sewer rate studies, um, that I put together after Mike and I worked on these budgets. Uh, we basically did nothing to them any different than this year. I wanted to make sure that the rates that we have going right now are adequate enough to handle next year's, you know, maintenance and operations, including interim um, construction interest and any other engineering fees and interest. So, I provided to you guys these two documents, those, these two documents. This is a water rate study I do each year. Um, this is provided by Minnesota Roll Water, it's really easy, we take our total volume, our total water pumped last year in gallons versus how much we sold. And how many num, how many connections we actually have, which is all the base fees we get. Plug in all the expenses for both accounts, this is water and sewer, they're two different accounts. Um, this is the total budget. Labor, wages, um, depreciation, debt, insurance, the whole nine yards. And then at the bottom, you'll see this little number down here, seven dollars ninety-three cents or six dollars and forty-six cents. That's how much it is for a thousand gallons, so basically right now we charge point zero six six a gallon water and sewer. If I put those construction services into here, we're undercharging the amount of volume we charge right now. But it's just that one year. When I first gave you guys this, when the previous council was considering to forward with this project, you know, I, I went out five years and the rates that we were doing two years ago are not the rates we have now. And it looked like there would be like a, a spike where our volume would have to be higher at the end, at the beginning, when we do the construction and then we leveled that out. And I think that'll still happen, it'll just, it'll look like we're not charging enough the first year. So we have a consideration of two things. Raise the rates to make this up. Or take the, um, construction and engineering services for the utility out of the reserve accounts instead of what we do out of our checking or actual operations funds. What else you guys?
Don't say we're below average for what we're doing.
Right now, our rate, yeah, for what we get for our base fees, this shows that we should be slightly higher in water, but not sewer. When we raise the rate of sewer to meet water, we were really good. And we're still good with sewer.
Your numbers are completely based on how much water we pumped out of the plant though, right? So those numbers are, those numbers are skewed by the fire department.
Yep.
Um, by the pond, by my shop.
Yeah.
Uh, hydrant flushing, all that uses water that's not metered, not paid for essentially.
That's that unaccounted water.
That's all that loss.
Yeah. That's what I was wondering. Yeah. Yeah, that's that. And the, and the spreadsheet has that on the publication, to know that, that's, that's your difference. It's paid for, it's paid for somewhere, right? Yeah. But as you can see from the study for the water portion, that's the only one that looks like it's, it's undercharged at this point. Um, my recommendation would probably be to consider leaving the rates the way they are right now until the construction is done. And consider taking, um, the rest of your engineering fees, uh, your reserve accounts, utility reserve accounts. And, because I did this study with also just the interim interest and it was, you made your rate fine.
I know when I was on the council, we discussed small increases yearly, because we hadn't increased in forever.
Right.
Three years ago, it was, what? Ten years?
No, no, they were raised in fourteen. They were raised in sixteen. And then we raised them in nineteen. So it wasn't that bad. Um,
Now, this would be an increase for twenty.
It would be an increase for your base fees, I think we're doing just fine for as many, um, connections you have. If anything, the volume would go up again, but you can't guarantee volume, that's why they always push to make a base for, your base fees right, because you can guarantee your base fees, that's you just can't guarantee how much volume there is.
And this will be a decision you make.
Well, yeah, on the new business, um, Max, I have your resolution for rates and charges, so I wanted to preempt the conversation because this is in there. Um, and then we can get down to it. I, I'm comfortable with the way these are, but I am having a hard time wrapping my head around is still that out-of-pocket expense for this project. I know there's enough money in the resort accounts to do that, I'm just always very uneasy spending that.
How many dollars have we already spent on this?
Hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
So we're basically beyond the point of no return rate?
We are.
Okay, I just wanna clarify that.
Yep, we are.
But you guys can take your five-gallon buckets and your, if you're crying, chairs you have down. And your window shades. Hell, oh.
What, what do you want me to do with the five-gallon pills?
I mean, you're, you're, you're
In the shop?
You're nice, you're nice furniture you have down there, hell, oh.
Yeah, the, I don't, I don't know where that is, I think you went to the wrong shop if you saw a nice furniture somewhere. I know.
And this is the reason I wanted to put this together. Mike, your, your point is absolutely valid. For as much construction services as we have done already in Cape Woodset.
It's, we're too far in.
We're too far into it, the, the out of, the full out-of-pocket, including the the contingencies is two hundred and sixty-eight grand, well, two hundred and sixty-nine basically.
When, when it came to, when it came to the mirroring this?
Hmm.
Yeah, and I don't have that factor in here, you guys.
That's what I, I had a big problem with the mirroring of this, and that's where I stumbled on this. Like, if we do this, we're in it, we have to go forward.
And that's why we did it when we did it, because we were already
Well, I know we were in it, but, you know, that's where I had a question a quick time, because I was going, that's I mean, just to do that.
Yeah.
We are, you're, by what we already had in it. And you, you know, I'm looking at it, I was going over these numbers here, like, before I came in here, and I'm like.
Well, we're, we're yeah, three years into this at this point, two years? Two years, so I mean, it's, it's been a long and arduous process here, it's not like anybody jumped in.
Well, and, and to be fair, nothing this large gets done quick in any government's and any setting. It took the city of, a city of the Midgee over five years to build their liquor store. And their waste, wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, but you actually think, I mean, you needed a billion?
And that's a conversation, I don't think we need that. That's a whole other, that's a whole other conversation.
Ah, and they lost money back in the first six months.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So, to be as transparent as I'm trying to be.
Absolutely.
Very honest as Mike likes to call me. I, I, I need to give you guys all as much information as possible so that I can say by night. You know, we're leaving, we're leaving, if we keep pushing forward, we're leaving a legacy that, you know, people are gonna talk about for the next fifty plus years. When this project is done.
Oh, oh, you're a big, alright.
What? That's not a good thing for us.
Yes, yes, they do.
Yes, they do. Well, we have to go forward, yes.
So.
This is one of those things where if we drop it now.
It would be stupid.
We've
You'd never hear the end of it.
Either way.
If, if you continue, we will never hear the end of it.
Women's, yeah. Yeah.
If.
So we'll have something at the end of the day.
But at the end of the day, this is the next fifty years, when, when we're gone.
And this is all before us. This is all pretty much before.
Well, some of us are fortunate.
Yeah.
It's dumb as you.
Yes, this is all pretty much before this council.
Minus Max.
Size Max, yeah.
He was a big interiorist.
Yeah. So, I wonder that boss that just went by Zoom? Any comments or other questions I can provide you guys, you guys figure that out.
We can move on.
Very good.
We see what's going on.
I see that too, my goodness.
Oh my gosh. So I'm understanding, this are where it says the less, less the equipment grant, less the contingencies, less the
Interim interest.
Yeah, those are all if or possibilities.
So the US, the less the equipment grant, this, this is the equipment we are planning to put into the facility, okay? But we know by factoring it into the USDA grant, that pushes us beyond what we've been looking for. So we've decided to back that out and apply for another USDA community facility grant. So it's less money, there will be a little bit of a loan. We did a, uh, we did the same exact one where we can get this equipment, and that's how we brought Skid steer up last summer. Where you can get up to fifty thousand dollars as a grant. And if it goes beyond that, up to thirty thousand dollars, it's a loan interest loan to pay for the equipment. So we, I backed that dollar out of its total because we do want this equipment in the facility. But we can't borrow for it to build the facility and whatever. Yeah, okay, now the contingencies, there's gonna be contingents. We just don't know how much it's gonna be. So we had to put a percentage in there to estimate how much that contingency is going to be. This is based on five percent.
And contingencies don't go in the one.
And no use paying for furniture, stuff like that. I mean, for thirty, forty years.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, your FFNE, that's what they, yeah, yeah, and the interim.
Just sit in the back hole, that's fine, just hit the building up. We'll pull the trucks in and sit those.
And the, and the interim interest, obviously you have to pay as you're going. Because what we're doing is we're getting a construction loan basically. I'm paying interest on that construction loan until USDA finals our loan for the whole thing, when the building is done and signed off and then turns into that. So that's our responsibility. Oh yeah, keep in mind, another thirty, well, twenty-five, thirty percent of this building is gonna be a police department that we don't even have that for yet.
Oh, we're working on it.
And we're working on that, so that's a really hard thing for a lot of people's stomach, but we have a plan and we're still gonna push forward, I mean, County's trying to build a jail and
I am, I'm
They don't have that yet.
Blackthick needs a police department.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it needs to be up to up to today's standards, exactly, when they, or when they were doing the design on the building and I was hearing all the things that should be in a police facility, they had no idea.
Yeah.
So.
That's the
Well, for instance, if they have something they need to open, they don't know what it is. Rather than getting a face full of, I don't know. They have an enclosed area where it can be opened and it's directly vented. So that there's a lot of safety stuff, but we live in a crazy world. Anyway, we can
Move forward?
Move forward, yes.
Okay. Um, item B on old business is just an update on the project funds for the liquor store. Um, you see where we're at with the balance. Um, we have not been built for the two, uh, change orders, one of them was the um, the sewer line that went underneath and fixing that in the men's room, that was, I think it came out to thirteen thousand. And then there's another one. Um, oh, it goes all the way back to the beginning, I can't remember, I'm gonna tell you what it was. So we still got about another thirty thousand dollars out of pocket that the liquor store funds gonna have to pay for, for everything that goes outside this project balance. And I haven't gotten what the reserve is or what the percentage they're holding yet to build. Getting close, but we're done.
They got the fires going yet?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. We also said the kitchen will be with their next food order, they should start getting everything else.
Oh, nice.
Great.
So, good.
Yep.
Back to a full menu.
I think we owe a little bit more to Reinhardt's on some of the kitchen equipment, but we're very close to having that all uh, fully paid too. So, if there's anything else. The only thing that I know Shonda and I need to work on is if and how we're gonna do the security system in the future. Um, there's a big conversation Um, there was a big conversation years ago with previous council board. You know, just like this facility, um, we had to call Paul, take Paul Dunyan to do all the data lines and. And phone lines and everything, it's the new portion of the building. Um, but our security system that's in there is pretty antiquated, pretty analog right now. So we took out a few cameras and we kept a few. Put some back, but. Might be doing something a little different in the future, maybe in a couple of years. Right now, what we have is, is gonna be fine, because we still have a security system that arms the building. Um, perimeter when we're closed, and the new doors that are on that facility are a lot, a lot more adequate. I'm uncomfortable with that. Shonda has, um, Mailers writing a quote to, when the beer cooler was put in. The way all of the. Product was planned in that existing beer cooler, now she's using for all those craft beers and seltzers and smaller. Pieces, if you will, and we don't have enough of the glides and shelving to really hold enough product in there, so she's working with Mailers to get. An adequate quote on getting some more guides, so that product can go in there. That'll be out of pocket too, but she's trying to save as much money. Right now, what we have is working, but what ends up happening is like you have a shelf that's made. Originally to hold like two cases of beer side by side on its wide side, or three on its end. And now, because the cans of all the other stuff are so much smaller, we'd like to put like four on one shelf, and she can't. She can get like three and then half of one. So she's trying to work on the best way to maximize the space in that existing cooler. Or waiting on some estimates on.
All, I think it's got pretty good reviews, that people are happy it's open.
American Rescue Plan.
Aside from our previous conversation, the only thing that I'm working with Mike on right now is to get some adequate numbers on. And how we would like to improve on the lift stations. Um, what's the best way to spend that money? Um, if that is the way the city wishes to go, which I was feedbacking out last time, and what we can do with that money. So, right now, we're just still doing some investigation on that. We won't get the second half until next year anyway, so.
I thought the stop truckers were gonna be putting in a parking lot this fall.
You know, I haven't had a, um, conversation with Max Vermeister since August. Um, I've sent him the, I just got the lease agreement from Joe Langle on Friday night, so I forwarded it to him today. And that's why I put it in, um, the agenda was just for you guys to review it. I would like to get feedback from Max and their Stoneville Club before the council approves it too. This is the first draft.
But this will be again.
I think so, I mean, they know they have to go ahead to build the lot, Max. Um, this is just what we would like to do for the next twenty years. So that the city's liability is covered, same with the Stoneville Club. Right now, the biggest question mark relies around that building. Um, you know, your, your attorney has been. Has been hired or appointed to look out for the best interest of the city, and he's not comfortable with. How that inspection came out of that building. I think that the Stoneville Club thinks that they can improve on it. Out of their own pocket, and I'm just a little concerned on both sides there, how that's gonna work. Well. That's gonna be, yeah, it's a little premature to have a conversation.
It's only eighty by eighty?
That's how big the parking lot could be, yeah. That's how the grant was written. Any questions on this?
I don't. Anyone else?
Um, thing on the old business, I did put that rendering proposal in there. Because you guys did not want to take any action at the last meeting, which is fine, if you guys want to discuss it tonight, you can. I won't see any of the reconstruction. Until probably into January. Steve and the retired engineer are gonna meet the first week in December in buildings to start looking at the reconstruction plans. So we may not have an idea of how much those, the reconstruction is gonna cost for.
I think the.
Another month or so.
I think an architect's rendering would be helpful, but I don't think it's necessary at this time.
Here again, we're, we're at a spot. That we. Are so far into this thing, we have to go. But. If, if we're kind of at this, when it's up, it's just kind of like, it's more money, more money, it's more money. You know, every time you turn around, it's more money, it's like, we're their only client.
No, you know, if I'm working international halls all year round.
Well, I, I know they're reluctant, but it's just.
No, and that's, that's true, and we could, if we put it on the back burner right now, because you don't have an empty space. Yet, so we're not. I mean, if you wanted to put it off and see if there's another. Firm or artist or someone who wants to. Put together what this could be.
Yeah, does anybody know a B S U student? Or, or somebody that's willing to do it, you know?
Architect, you know, somebody that's going to school in class, whatever it wants to.
I could be done spamming it, yeah.
You already have the idea.
I'm sorry, Nick.
We could ask our office.
That's something you might have to do then.
It doesn't, really, it doesn't have to be, it's just to help as a selling point, sometimes people, if they can visualize what.
And I kind of like the idea, man.
Yeah, I think Gretchen did a great job. Rescaping, you know, where this new stood place was. I mean, I realize she doesn't use all the property all the way to the back, but, you know, her, you know, her front space, that's great.
And in future, if she wants to sell that, there's plenty of room to add.
Yeah, somebody wanted to go back. So yeah, I mean, if somebody has a contact or something, and they know somebody at B S U or the high school. We can consider that, we have time.
Because we, yeah, we're not on our two-year clock yet. To fill it.
Um, the last two things on the old business, I, I am at a meeting with Bert Meyer. Next week to go over what they have put together for the regional significance for the sales tax, so I should have. That for you guys. At the next work session. And adopt the resolution in January as our.
We're doing one in December?
Yeah, a work session.
Usually that's a Christmas present, Christina.
Well, I'd like a Christmas present too, but it's less work.
I mean, if we've got enough to do, then let's, we'll do it, but.
Put it this way, as long as the resolution is adopted in January, you know, what? I can, I can send the draft up to you guys, if I don't want to be in December, I'd be happy to give that to you guys, and give it to me too. I still got work to do, but yeah, um, what I come up with from Bert, I will make sure I send out to you guys. And then the website, I had a preliminary meeting with Amanda Schaefer last Friday through Zoom. Um, we all, we went over some needs and some wants for the reconstruction of the city site. And the golf course, um, site, and then I'm just trying to help get the chamber site. Working so that you can at least get some reconstruction going, we probably won't look at. Parting ways with the existing web designer until more likely a six to eight week turnaround, is what she told me. Mid to late January. Yeah, she's working on it right now, so, yeah. It'll be at the beginning of the next year. Um, we did receive a, um, three thousand dollar donation from the Black Duck Development Corporation. To help with the redevelopment of the city portion of the website. That individual site, and like I stated at the last meeting, the Chamber of Commerce donated a thousand dollars. For the redevelopment of the city site, and we agreed to put that towards, of course, that money has been received. And deposited into its appropriate funds. The liquor store is going on its own, so she will work with Shonda and Melissa on that, needs and wants for that. I imagine I'll probably. If you guys come up with some ideas or some, add some feedback or just your own criticism, shoot it my way. Even if you think it's outlandish, you know. She's there, I asked her to be as open on why this website is so hard right now versus what we could. Have in this reconstruction, and she's, she's gonna shoot me as many ideas as possible, and if I don't think it's, it's gonna work. You know, we'll discuss it and try to find other solutions, but one of my definite, um. Needs is to really enhance and showcase the campground in many different ways. And take some of the drone footage and pictures that Mike took of the beach and the golf course in the campground last year and send that to her. Um, we're even looking at basing some of it off of. You know, Big Falls has a, a small website, but they've at least really focused a lot on their website. That little town. Um, I've even asked for us to have a way that people can pay for their reservations online, just so we do our utilities. And how that will look in our office and that. What I don't think I can afford is to do it on my reservation system. But anyway, yeah.
It will be buried.
That's, that's the biggest point, she's gonna have its own, gonna have its own tab. Instead of having you go into, right now, you can really find it, you have to search for it.
I mean, if you go on our city website now and click on like on and stuff, it's not coming, it's not. Are you gonna look into that at all, the online reservation possibility, and just see what the price would be at least?
I will, um, the, the struggle I have with. Putting that out there, Mike, is the simple fact that we allow open campings too.
We do, but I think, I think something that would greatly benefit us out there. Would be for potential guests to be able to look online and see that, hey, the weekend of. July twenty-sixth, the spot that I want is already taken.
Taken, I know.
You know, and, and a visual on there that coincides with that, I think would help a lot. And the open camp and. No, that's kind of a hard one for us, we struggle with that. Because we have people that absolutely love that they can just pop in and do it. But logistically, it makes it difficult for us.
It does.
Knowing that people are out there sometimes, we know, I know. Because I drive out there every day and I know.
And I'll tell you, even the state, like for instance, at Big Bang, they have had. That whole line of campsites on the roadside of their campground, I think it's at least ten sites. Forever since they've updated that area as, um, non-reservable. And last year, they, they changed it to all reservable. COVID was a big part in that.
I have a feeling that eventually, we will be in the same situation. Way we want it out there.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll. So that's what I have for old business.
Just off the top of my head though, like, what about our driver's license?
So I found.
You know.
Multiple retails with the Department of Public Safety in that section, and the last time I got response back was. So I wanna say late July and early August, and I, I'm like, hey, you know, I sent this in March. Was wondering when this is gonna get approved or even denied, and I was informed that they were behind. Everybody else, and that somebody would notify me, you know, shortly, whatever that means. I, I'm following up every quarter, Max. I don't know when we're gonna get approved, I don't know what the slow, I don't know what's slowing everything down, I mean, it's not like the Department of Public Safety at the state level is small. And is understaffed, and I imagine that section is, I don't understand what's pulling me back.
People that don't have a clue.
I'm so sorry. So I, I requested the council in March to. Uh, put in a limited DMV in City Hall.
Oh, okay.
Where we would have the capabilities of updating your tabs. Um, we wouldn't do the D N R portion of it, because that can all be done online. We do tabs, we do title transfers, and we do, uh, we could do license renewals, but not license. Um, there's a fee that the state charges, and a portion of that goes to the office. Um, with this busy as the county is, and this part is, um, we would still have a service. Population of about three thousand. A little bit more than that, and.
Yeah, it was a little higher.
It was, okay, um, and I needed to formally request that of the Department of Public Safety, they have to designate it in office. Because there's a statute that, um, has some restrictions around it, and what you can and cannot do. You can't take away a certain dollar amount of revenue from another office within twenty miles of you. Which we would qualify within that parameters. Um, I don't know if they're looking at the revenue that the county makes. And making sure that that hole would not, you know, reduce theirs, and that's the hangup, I don't know what's holding it up, I really don't.
Well, I mean, if, if you think of how handy it would really be for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, I have had a lot of positive feedback when I first talked about it. And Caslake, the city of Caslake has one, and they only have two people in their office as well, and. They get anywhere from seventeen, what did I say, thirty thousand dollars a year in revenues and fees? And that would be a huge benefit. And that would be a huge benefit to the city, but also, as I've stated in the past. A big reason for people to stay as, you know, a taxpayer.
There used to be some old lady in there that worked in that office at Cast Lake. If you could go over there and do anything, you'd have one.
We'd have. I think, I think you have an incredible amount of pull, I, I really do, I just, I was just curious to see if it was still something.
A good reminder, I'll follow up again, see if I, what's going on, but thank you. I just know what it'll hit, it'll hit hard, and, and Tony treats like you, like, need to hire another person if you guys get it open.
We're gonna have.
Yeah.
They're paid. Yeah.
Kate just doesn't sit there and pick her nose though, she's busy. Got a lot of responsibilities, but yes, both she and I agree that we would be able to handle the additional responsibilities. At least for the first, once we get going, we'd have to see how much demand actually happens, I, I know. I've had people all summer that hop in, that have a place from here to Cast Lake down the. Probably had somebody two weeks ago that came in and asked to get their permit to carry here.
I just want, but he got apps or two of my vehicles.
I'll do another follow up, see what I can find out for you.
Alrighty, onward. The one we all, uh, some of us.
Love to hate.
Love to hate.
You know, I would like to make a smaller recommendation, Max, and you can tell me if. I'm off base or not, but I would say considering how many changes you've had in the last four months. At the last three, the only thing that you guys would change is your vice mayor. Well, somebody wants to start shaking the dice and, and the cards again. You guys have just gotten on these boards, I don't know why we would change them, so it's been such a quick amount of time.
I'm great with how it is.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just kidding, that's all.
Right.
I, you know.
Right, and, and Lori and Bobby Joe are still trying to get their feet wet, so. Yeah, barely. She hasn't even been to a meeting.
Well, that's, that's the way it was with me, I didn't get, go to nothing, all of a sudden. And you get, you get.
Right.
You know, you hear that movie, so. Why do you wanna change the vice mayor?
Max?
I guess we don't have to, but if somebody else. Wants to be vice mayor.
Well, you just need to understand that if some, if, if he can't make it to a meeting.
You've gotta run the meeting.
You've gotta run the meeting, so one of the, one of your predecessors suggested at one point that you take turns. Each year, so that somebody has the opportunity to try to do something, uh, get more experience, that really. Really lies greatly on your mayor, and if they're an absentee mayor, I mean, Max is not, so. I mean, just because it's a name doesn't mean it has a role.
Right.
Oh.
My, my.
But it's up to you guys, so.
Uh, if everyone's okay, I think you, you just leave it the way it is, I just.
Great, makes my life easier.
If you live with that?
Yeah. Of you.
These are, these are your resolutions that you guys are gonna adopt again, and on the first meeting in January, that's what I'm trying to get you to do, since you don't wanna work session in December.
Oh, really? You wanna pull it out?
Do you see that bus just flying through you? Uh, your next, your next resolution would be your schedule of fees and charges for twenty-two. Um, Mike and I have been through all of his departments, and the ones that would affect. Um, costs would be your water account, your sewer account, um, Pine Tree Park, if there was any changes to that. Um, I'm not doing anything to the cemetery, we can't change anything for. Like your curfew violations and stuff, those are all basically, um, where they need to be in terms of state statutes.
Yeah, what about, uh? Something that pops up, oh, every year.
Which is?
Our parking. For snow removal.
No, we're not changing these.
Yeah.
We have finally figured out a process, I'm not changing this dollar or anything.
We, uh, we're all good with that, though.
Yes, we know, we know what we're gonna do.
We're all good, and I did a guess, but it's from Christina, so.
Cause we're not sure what you're talking about.
I don't wanna get into it all.
I don't either. But what's, um, so.
It's gonna come on.
Well, you might, we'll just throw it out there, we're here now. How we do it or what we charge, what do you think is gonna come up? Whenever it is.
The whole word.
It's, it's the whole entire.
The, the whole thing, it comes up every year, every time we get that major snow.
It already would've came up this year if we had a police force.
Correct.
With the first two plows that we did, and I had forty cars on the street.
We're, we're going to have the warnings. Those warnings don't go in, then the tickets come, and they get both.
So what we did for you three, or if you were here. Jason and I basically ended up working very closely with it and communicating back and forth, um. I would put notices on cars when we were out plowing. If he wasn't here yet, he would come in, we kept a log of what vehicles we were putting notices on, so that we weren't missing vehicles or double noticing. So it was one notice, second time, it was a ticket, third time, we were told. Because we've gone over this and over this.
You're way nicer than me.
Yeah, and that, and that's just it, but Midgey, it's getting told the first time.
If there is no.
It's calendar parking, you better be off their side, yeah.
And, and we don't have calendar parking, however, our ordinance states that. In the event of a two-inch snowfall, all vehicles need to be off the road, every single road. So we're covered, in my opinion, with what we're doing.
So all you'd have is a twenty-dollar. Snow removal restriction.
We've been down that too, that's, we can't charge more because of state stuff.
So what we do is we charge on the snow removal and.
Fee for impeding snow removal.
Yeah.
Twenty-five dollars.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh.
We charge both.
And then the first time, like you said.
Two hundred for the snow, and then you get the tickets.
Then you gotta pay for impound.
That, that's what the kicker here is for us, you know, honestly, we really don't wanna do this. I don't wanna piss around getting out and putting notices and tickets and everything else on, I just want the vehicle on the road.
Just wanna get the soda.
Right, so the thing is that even though the amount isn't that much, I, I don't really care about the amount, really, I don't. I just want them to get the point to get off the street. And that's usually done when they gotta pay that fee for the tow. In all honesty, that's what actually hurts.
Yeah, a lot of people that live downtown here, or I'm not saying just downtown, but.
It's everywhere in town.
Oh, is it?
It's everywhere.
There's not just.
When we say tow, we're just moving the vehicle, correct? Or is, or is.
Jason's gonna pull it to the other side of the street.
We, we were kinda going back and forth on that. With what we wanted to do. The, the thing is, I don't think it really matters whether it goes around the block and gets dropped. Or if it goes back to Bogart's, I think it's gonna cost them the same amount of money either way.
Let's say they're gonna target you.
And, and my, my thing on it with it is. Yeah, if the other side is plowed, then yeah, you can drop it over there, but at the same time. Our plow routes look crazy, just because of how, you know, it's easiest to shift around. I just want the thing out of there, if that means they take it back and lock it up in their compound for a week and charge people more and they get the point, so be it, I guess. They just need to learn.
So basically, it costs them forty dollars, forty-five dollars for you to move their meat.
That's essentially what it is, if we just move it around, but they have to pay the Bogart, that doesn't come to us. Whatever Bogart's charges took. And move around.
Like all the cars in front of your house, three days?
And you know, the other thing, the other thing with that is too, and, and I've made it aware to anybody and everybody that I can. If they have issues with not being able to move snow, we have a freak storm or something. They don't have a piece of equipment to move snow in their yard or something, we will come and help you. One time. I'm not plowing people's driveways all winter and stuff, but we will come and help you once you get some snow out of the way to get you off the road. But then you need to maintain it from there, so it's not like we're not willing to go out and help and do what we can for people, we, we are. Cause ultimately, we just want them out of the way, so that we're not causing accidents or property damage over there.
Um.
I just wanted everybody on the same page, that's good to know.
I, I would like the council to discuss the water and sewer rate.
Yeah.
Um, going back to my original old business. If, um, they're willing to take our recommendation, keep buzzes. Knowing that we pay for some of our out-of-pockets, out-of-reserves. Yeah. Yeah, so the only one that looks like it's, is not high enough down would be the water rate. The water budget, if I put the, if I put the, um. Engineering fees into our budget.
Were we paying more than that this summer?
Point zero zero six six, it's basically six dollars and sixty cents.
Okay.
No, you and I, you and I go back and forth.
We don't know where to put the decimal points on this.
Our, our, our math is different.
I think it is differently.
Us three have been rounding around all this water.
Six dollars and sixty cents. Point zero zero six six per gallon.
There in all years. Oh.
So it's like seven bucks for a thousand gallons.
Don't, don't water.
Six and a half dollars for a thousand gallons of water.
Yeah.
One bottle of water at the gas station, if you buy the cheap stuff, is ninety-nine cents for twenty ounces of water. That's the way I like to put it into perspective for people. So our water rates are.
Good.
That's where the only I would like to say to what you're asking.
Yeah.
Um, if you take away your fees and stuff, your engineering stuff that you're talking about.
We're on, we're right up where we need to.
But, but with taking that away and not even thinking that, just thinking of the water and sewer fees in general, I would still. Maybe against what you're saying, I would still suggest. That very miniscule increase on a yearly basis. So that we aren't every three or four years hitting them with what we did in nineteen.
Are you talking about per gallon usage, or are you talking about the?
Well, like, like Chris, like Christina said, the, the base rates are what you're guaranteed are going to be there. But I feel like our base rates are on the upper end right now.
They are, and I think we've kinda evened them out with the last increase, with this last.
Right. Because before, our sewer was much lower than our water, so we brought those up and evened them out. I would suggest probably a usage increase, even though it's not a guaranteed number.
But it's fully.
It's a move in the right direction without the large hit. That this town has been doing every five, six, eight, ten years, whatever it's been. So slow, steady, people can plan for it and a, a few cents here and there.
I mean, we could go up probably. Like two and a half cents. You know, and it wouldn't really make a huge difference to people, and it wouldn't even be seventy cents at that point, it'd be like, it's, it's. What would be like six eighty? It wouldn't make a huge difference to most people.
Yeah, if you go that, my.
I don't either.
You've got one of those back hookups over there, don't you? I gotta get in and see your meter next week.
We're gonna have to do a background check.
There you go.
All clear, I had to do that at the school to volunteer for the football team this fall. Kinda shocked by that, world's changed a lot.
Just about anything is gonna happen.
Yeah.
What do you guys think, is it an increase or?
Oh, you know, it's not gonna hurt, um. A lot of the time, you can't, you have to. You can't rate, you know, look, you can't raise taxes a lot, meaning we already give. You can't go a lot of nickel or, same here. I wouldn't want. If you don't, you gradually go a little bit here and there, I don't see why I.
Yeah.
Okay. I can't be right, trying to figure out how much we make of two and a half cents per each gallon.
It's that, it's that water math again.
It's not even two cents per gallon.
Perfect.
Do five gallon bucket.
Yeah.
Two and a half gallons would just cut me in half, get two and a half gallon buckets.
You have a pad, a bucket list.
What's that?
We do have those padded bucket.
They, they got them fancy ones, spin on you.
They have a max now, too.
Oh, yeah. Or a little hole cut in them, so you can technically use running water. Anyway.
Oh, boy.
How about that increase, Christina?
Yeah. Yeah, you're gonna make like. One thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
More.
But it'd be a lot easier for the public to do that, rather than all of a sudden, the year after, we have to double it.
Yeah.
That was at a two and a half cent.
That's what, yeah.
Increase.
Yeah.
Do you know what our increase was last time, do you remember?
The only thing we increased was sewer, and sewer was point four four, and we brought it to point six six, so.
We didn't even raise water in nineteen?
We raised our base rate.
Base rate went up.
Base rate went up, and we raised sewer to meet water volumes, so the volumes were, were the same.
When was the last time that the usage was raised, though?
The water usage?
Yep.
Water volume was raised in two thousand fourteen, I believe.
Seven years.
So you're saying two cents per. Now, since.
Instead of sixty-six cents, it'd be sixty-eight cents.
Well, it adds up.
It, it will add up. You know, cause two and a half cents, then another two and a half next year, now you're out of nickel, you know?
Yeah, but you're not, you're not drinking, how many gallons of water do you drink a day, or use a day versus what you're putting in your body? You know, that's, that's the difference.
But you have to pay for what you.
Go in and out, right, so. Right.
What's the average, you, you're not gonna know this off the top of your head, but I wanna say it's around. What, seven thousand gallons a month, roughly, for a family of four? Somewhere in there, six thousand?
I think.
Six thousand gallons.
Family when everybody was living on the first street was doing like five.
It's like twenty people.
Five people in this house.
No, you have one, uh, you have four kids and him and Jane, that's six people.
No, not everybody.
Okay, family, family of four. Five, six thousand gallons a month of water, right? At sixty-six cents per thousand gallons. You can all do that math, right? You can all do that math, right?
Never seen like this show.
Uh, it's like five dollars. Their usage. Five dollars for the amount of water that they use in the entire month. Dirt cheap. In my opinion.
Keeping the bottle.
It's, I mean, that's that's buying a case of bottled water. Off brand bottled water, bought one case at the grocery store. And that's same price as all the water that your family used for an entire month. That's why, in all honesty, I get really irritated when I hear people stuff for the base rate and your sewer rate. Right. Right, that's where that's the the higher part, I will say that.
I was. Forty two dollars.
But that's.
Too much showerway mark my house.
For your water and your sewer and then all the use. Still, to me, really forty five dollars a month. Little over a dollar a day.
I think in the summer, it was like fifty five hours.
Oh, no, mine is. Especially water.
I was a hundred. Hundred fifty five in the summer.
You look fine.
I'm not, you know. I'm not against raising that. I just think about people who are big on incomes. That's one thing I really. I worry about those folks. If we start them, and a lot of those folks are living in an apartment setting too that provided, right?
Most permits get free water.
They pay eighteen dollars.
Right. That went up. Last year because we noticed that it was, it it was. It wasn't right the way that it was before. The the homeowner was much more than an apartment. If I remember correctly, like.
Correct.
Double or better.
Yes.
And everybody was using the same water, but the apartments weren't having to pay. But yeah, I I would definitely suggest. A slow increase every every year. What exactly that comes out to be, what you guys are comfortable with? Just like I said, I mean, I broke it down for you now that. The average family is. Five dollars a month or so. Again, that's just the one.
You can't compare us to Pemengeji, they have more hookups.
They do. I mean, they're, it's cheaper in Pemengeji. Have a rental in Pemengeji. The garbage is included and have. Five people in our house and they're both uh, ours and there's only three. And it doesn't include garbage, so. But again, you're looking at the hookups. A lot more. What do we have?
Three hundred and sixty some hookups, I believe.
Well, technically, if you break it down by multi-family, you have one hundred and four hundred and fifty.
Yeah, we have that. This is a really small area. A couple of our come in a couple of blocks, you know, so.
They're coming up with some numbers over there.
Yeah. I mean, how much are we looking to, you know? Build up and from that as far as financial is, you know, what are you looking to get out of that?
Well, the more that we make, the more we can depreciate. And that goes into that reserve. Okay. Based off of the number of gallons we sold last year. At the six sixty per thousand, if we go to it'll be six eighty five. We'd make about forty eight hundred dollars more. Did not right. This is not a ton. We made hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars up at the rate we're at right now with the number of gallons sold.
If we went to six eighty five. That decimal point.
Yeah, I'm telling you. We go back and forth on that.
You need to convert it to per thousand, like the amount of thousands of gallons we've sold, not. On the gallon. And then it's easy to. So you wanna raise water and sewer volume rates.
I would suggest you raise them together.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. So it'd be six dollars and eighty five cents per thousand.
Yeah.
I made a motion.
Yeah, you can't. Yeah, I'll just change it in your, I'll change it in your document, you guys. The author has it been.
Yeah, we'll change it.
And we'll make sure we tell the public because we have to sell them public.
Alright.
It always goes so out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So the rest of these fees that, this is the first time I've seen, I have seen all these fees.
Okay.
And I was, that's what I was going through. These are all the same as what they were.
This year, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct, so. What's that? I don't know. I can't do, I can't do minutes of conversations with you guys. I'm telling you, I I don't, I don't have, I want live conversations, but I can't do minutes when you do that. Anything else you want to touch? How does gold do? Yeah, let's wrap it up. Um, the next resolution will be the um, planning election judges for twenty two. Because we'll have an election. If you remember, governor's up for reelection.
So why?
As mayor.
Alrighty.
For our two year term.
Okay, so.
Are you there for long?
Uh, and then item D is the draft of my bits and taxation. Did you guys have a chance to go through this?
Yes, I did.
Anybody else? Any comments? Mike thought I was doing this to the front like tonight. Like, no.
I saw it earlier, I was like, oh man.
I just figured I'd give you guys what I've got. And ask for some feedback because this is what we're gonna get. Side note, has anyone received their proposed property tax for twenty twenty two statement in the mail yet?
Okay.
Okay, so you have? No, I haven't. So. My thought, my head is like, okay, this is either gonna go really, really well. Or really, really bad because the timing is so far late. Normally, people get it first, but you don't remember. And the county hasn't sent them all yet. We have two weeks before your truth, my, the truth and taxation pre- presentation. If they get them in the mail the same day or the Friday before, you're gonna have an audience. The earlier you get it, the more questions I usually get yielded prior to. The less audience participation you have. A little worried about that myself, but. That is a big difference. Questions, I thought, remember I told you guys at the last meeting that I added a couple of pages? Try to humanize our conversations and summarize what we've been doing, so page is seven. And part of. Um, mostly it's seven is something I added this year.
So. Negative, property taxes are going up ten point three.
That's the difference once we pull the money from the American Rescue. That's the difference from what was.
Alright.
So. I figured if you guys had this ahead of time, then I could field your questions. That way, the sixth meeting goes a lot smoother.
Yeah, I've looked at it and I'm kind of. Where else can you put?
Properties in town. Right, most cities do.
Well, we got nine churches here.
And you got school. And schools, and you've got city companies. There are a population.
There is.
Yeah, I would agree with you, yeah.
I was surprised when we looked at how many gas stations there were for the amount of people.
I just found another one over there by the. There's another church. I had to get blood this morning.
Yeah, and 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 good Sam is technically.
Because they only have one mosque, basically. It's like, you see, those are the higher.
What do you use?
Yeah, churches and bars and stuff. You know, they're not equal. Yeah, they are. I have. I have a good friend that we go up there once a year.
Anyway.
Four places that serve liquor and you had one church.
Yeah, it's like that's.
This is a big church.
Yes. Turn on the page, Max.
The materials.
About it.
Forty.
What are you saying? You can't just open a conversation like that. You gotta be a little more specific.
Down to twenty thousand?
The same as it is this year.
Where it's at twenty thousand.
Right.
You know, we tried to keep it tight again.
Yeah. But remember.
Year, year.
You got that, you got that state um, street funding this year, but I mean, what was that nineteen thousand? The state money that came in.
Where did that go?
In the general fund or? It's in the general fund. Your street funds in the general fund.
Yeah.
You don't have your own check.
Says there.
Yeah. You know.
In my account.
I told you. Just gonna have to understand that. It's just how the world works here. I fell, I'm sorry, you're in the wrong.
So there was twenty thousand dollars in the state?
We got half of it um, in. Why, I believe I had it in you guys' pocket. That could only go to street improvements. So it's given by the state. I wanna say it was nineteen thousand by the end of this year. You can use that at any time.
But that's not what the one thousand.
No, 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 no.
That is an additional.
Right.
So if it was cut by ten, put that to ten thousand.
Yeah.
What kind of percentage points are we looking at there?
It might drop two. It might drop one and a half. I can't do it without my spreadsheet.
I know.
Too many variables.
What does twenty thousand get you? Not a whole hell of a lot.
And what did you say is in Minneapolis, or that was Paige? City Minneapolis is, Luddy is going up. Where she said this one. Like twenty seven percent.
Oh, their property taxes, that was me. That's like twenty one or twenty two percent.
Yes, their Luddy's going up.
Because everybody moved out of there.
Should be going the other way.
No, no, that wouldn't, that wouldn't cause it that quickly. I mean, you'd still be paying property taxes on 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 structures and stuff down regardless of people live there or not.
You got a lot of rebuild.
Yeah.
They got seventy five percent of the downtown of them.
So we are, or if what percentage right now?
Ten point three. What are you guys asking me to do?
We must save the time. Do we have to pay off fees or how does that work out?
Uh, that's not something we're having a conversation, a work session. Personnel, and I won't.
Even if we save this year, though, it wouldn't make a difference for next year.
No.
No offense, because when we, the the document that you have in front of us, when we do this on December sixth, and it's like Christina said, you could have a room full. And everybody's gotta be on the same page here. This isn't one of those things where. Oh, I shouldn't say you have to. You don't have to. You don't have to vote for it. But.
But you do have to certify it by December twenty eighth. Which means you don't get your day off.
Exactly.
Pass it on the sixth. You have to call a special meeting.
So. I just want everybody to be very aware. The the numbers you see in front of you are what you're gonna be telling the rest of the community. I don't see how you can change it at all. We've been over this so many times. Trimming and trimming and trying to trim more. There really isn't much left to trim in life.
I mean. I guess the only way other that I can spin it for you guys is the numbers are there. But if you continue to look at things like your taxable market value and your E and B and what was continued to grow, you're benefiting. Overall as taxpayer because it's getting spread out more as you're growing. If those two numbers started decreasing. And going the other direction, ten percent would hurt somebody so much more. Then it truly will. And. I I just, I don't know how to tell you guys that. It's just hard. There's just two, it's a double edged sword.
See, and what, I mean, I mean, be ready to face a room full of people, they're not going to be happy with it. They're not gonna like it.
Oh, I don't like it.
And.
It's a taxpayer.
And and then you vote for it anyway.
Yeah, I do because it makes sense. I understand. And as far as property tax codes, there, you know, you can get money back up. You just gotta file for it. And that is something that, I don't know, a lot of people understand that. It can do that. They'll get money back. So so the bigger picture is that, yeah, sure, you're paying out, you know, this amount for the year, but you're gonna get this amount back. I'm not a tax preparer. I just know that I get to do it, and it really sinks in better for me that way. I I can chew it up better that way. Knowing that, oh, I'm gonna recover some of this tax on.
Yeah.
I I usually wait till like August, but um. Anyway, I mean, maybe having a piece of that for the public to know that that's available.
Anyway, I mean, maybe having a piece of that for the public to know that that's available there.
Well, that's a very, that's a valid point.
Because, I mean, and.
That and last year, there was no. Please.
Right.
Everybody, everybody complains that.
Well, yeah.
We are, and we didn't.
Yeah, Black Deck didn't. So, and they had it pretty, they had it pretty happy. So, but again, you, you can keep that. I think that's maybe when people start getting a little intense about it, that's something that if you come here with that. Those tools for them.
Obviously, your property value goes up.
Yeah. Oh, mine's gone up. It's just ridiculous.
Yeah.
I mean, if I were to go get a loan right now, I could just get it to some money. Yeah. Because of what I paid for it compared to what it's valued at right now. It's crazy. Yeah. It's insane. So.
Yeah.
But.
I just want, I.
Yeah.
Everybody aware, and on the same page.
Is there anything that you guys would rather see in this document that I don't have? Or is any of the language I'm not understandable?
No, Christina, there's, to me, there isn't, but I've read them so many times that perhaps I'm a little.
Well, and, and I've written them so many times that to me, it's just, okay, number, number, number. So I'm trying to humanize it a little bit more. And you may have to bring. I, I have a little time to read it over again, just to see if we can make it a little. Less. Like when I, if you're gonna give this, as soon as I see this page, when I look at that, I go, bleh. I know. And I'm not, I mean, I know I'm gonna read it, but my first is like, bleh. Somehow to, to make it. Um. Less, less, less numbers. Technical. Yeah, um, it's difficult, um, to pack all that information in and then. Right. Be able to explain it all at the same time. It's hard. I, I've looked at the person that has been in my role. I looked at her, her truth and taxation's reports. Um, prior in their, like, age. And, you know, I mean, it's, it's a number and that's it. And I realize that the meat and potatoes of the, of the report are the expenses. And the revenues, but I've looked at other cities' reports and they, they show comparisons where all the money is going. They put those graphs in there so people can truly see, you know, okay, we do contribute a lot to public safety. Well, public safety is not just law enforcement. People need to understand that. I mean, I think this right here is a really. It, it's, it's kind of confusing. The first page, that first section. Where you've got your change from. You've got your ten point three percent, and automatically, people are gonna go, it's going up ten point three percent? And that's, but then, right or even. Then you're saying it's not necessarily, I know. So, yeah, I've seen Vamidji do that. Yeah, yeah. Um, for taxpayers, so I think right there, you're just. You're gonna see that ten point three, and that's what's gonna stick in their head. Yeah, it's just that, well, I'm thinking. I could be totally wrong, but.
Uh, so, would, there are also going to be a lot of misunderstanding about. Your taxes going up and a new addition. Everybody voting for a lady. Well, not everyone.
There's that bus. So. Um.
There will be confusion.
That's, I think, adding that, maybe adding that, where, you know, you are able to file to get some of that money back. I mean, property tax.
How? And we'll.
Try and.
This is the part where we. What, what is the number?
We take it.
It's ten percent, but, I mean, the average home value is what, ninety six, ninety seven thousand in black debt?
Um. I don't know if I have.
Is it higher than that?
Well, right now it is.
Well, it's way up just here.
These are a hundred.
Last year was like eighty, wasn't it?
Yeah.
They, they went.
I don't remember what.
They went up to like thirty thousand.
The Houses of Liberty Drive, what they sold for, there's like three of them that sold, right?
Boom, 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 way up.
Three dicks.
Yeah, I know, I should have bought Jason's when I told him about it. It's for rental. He's gonna sell it to me for ninety.
Yeah, you should have.
What was that, though? That's, that's what I'm curious, is what, I mean, we're saying ten percent. But on the average hundred thousand dollar house, what's the actual dollar?
Fifty dang dollars.
Fifty nine dollars? Over twelve months.
What it says here.
That's the ten hundred thousand.
That's. I don't see a lot of.
Roughly, yes. It's a small town. There's a lot of people that don't have a lot of money, and they, that. You know, there's.
There's your question.
There's help out there. There is help to pay your mortgage if they can't pay their mortgage.
Anything you wanna contribute? I see you. Take your hand.
Just out of curiosity, what percentage of that ten point three percent is that?
Nothing, but if you look at the normal people, they're gonna say, oh, why are your taxes going up when they just voted for a rate? What do you, what's the first thing that comes through your head?
So, how much of that percent is the rate?
It doesn't matter. They don't know what to be a rate.
But I'm still wondering.
Next, next, nothing.
Yeah, it, it really wouldn't, it really wouldn't make that pay.
Like, oh, 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 oh.
I would like to have that answer. Sure, um. I think I used to budget sixty five hundred. In previous years. And it went up to ten nine. So that's, I mean. That's less than thirty thousand dollars. It's not gonna make that big of a difference on a percentage basis. When I took nineteen thousand dollars of the American Rescue Act and put it into this money. Or put it into this levy and it dropped it from seventeen to ten. So it might, thirty five hundred dollars might drop a percent, maybe. Ten grand for street materials might drop it another two percent.
How much is left in the American Rescue Fund?
We have forty. Well, we, we get a total of a little over eighty three thousand when both years are done. We have half of it, we have forty four this year. We just earmarked nineteen of that forty four into next year. What is that, twenty?
But that could be used for modern sewer or public. What if we use that to alleviate pain for the first year of helping people with the water and sewer?
You're talking actually giving everybody a specific dollar amount.
Credit for their account, just to help for the first, so they get back on track on what the bills they pay and what.
So there.
That's just probably a crazy, you know, I just.
So, that has been discussed when the, um, when the money came in and then you have to go to water and sewer. Um, yes, you could offer each of your accounts a discount, but where does that? End up going and how do you make it fair to the person that is just a one person household versus a multifamily unit? That has twenty six apartments in it. Does that person get ten dollars and then that apartment get ten dollars?
How do you? It'd be hard to kind of work.
Correct. Mm-hmm. Correct. Because what you do for one, you've gotta do for all, so you'd end up doing a percentage.
But everybody in the apartment thing pays a. Part of the water.
Right.
So each person individually gets credit off of their.
So, how do you validate that each of those people are actually getting credit? Most apartment buildings and.
Checking their name?
Yeah.
Credit in their account name?
The problem is, is that not all of our apartment buildings, Nick. Are in the unit holder's name or landlord. Some are, most of the single family households in town that are rented are. But there are a lot of them that are also being paid for. So landlords don't get that money because they're. Not the person.
They don't have to pay a useless tax for water for the city? Like, if I go and got an apartment, I wouldn't get any bill from the city for water, so?
Like, in those buildings, I think the landlord's paying. I don't know if it's included in their rental or not. That's not something I. Most of it is.
It's built, it's built in. Whether they say it or not, it's built in.
It's not something that we're.
Well, that would be the only part that would give people here.
Right. Right. It's just, it. There's other money out there for people to get. I mean, Paige's, Paige's helped, I don't know, at least. Eight households sign up for relief through BICAF for their water and sewer accounts and.
BICAF is paid for anybody's past due bill rate.
As long as they're fitting within that, within the wage, their gross, their earnings gap. They're getting, I've seen. Three accounts in one day of eight hundred dollars past due get covered by BICAF for this money coming from the state. So there's stuff out there for people to apply for. You need to do the legwork.
That's the same thing with their tax. So. There's help out there.
There's help out there.
We need to communicate that to the public, where it shows up and.
Yes.
Need to work. Or, and that these people know that there is help out there. Yes, taxes are going up, but there is help out there.
Yes, there is. Can we get that put on our website? No, then you need to have the people actually look at it.
Oh, oh, if nobody's looking at the website, why are we releasing this money?
What I meant by, you know what I meant by that. But you can, you can send somebody a mailer, a bill, put something in the paper and online, but you still can't make them read it.
It's not real, it goes.
Until it hurts. Until they look in the mirror.
All right.
Okay.
I'm good with the, the rest of what we've got, so.
That's what they pay us.
Didn't mean to drag that one out. I just wanted to be very sure that everybody's.
Beat the dead horse.
Hey. I'm not changing it. Maybe with the way I have them. We can touch on, we can touch on Lori's comment, uh, uh, if it comes up.
Yes.
Okay. Right. Because it's useful information, but it's out there. It's not just this hidden gem, if you will.
Yeah, and it's one, it's also one of those times where it's. It's a public hearing. You have to listen. Or we're not here to argue with.
Right.
Please.
Okay, moving on to. Uh, this very large document, um, was provided to us from the service that Vite did last month?
Yep.
Last month. Um, this is part of the information that Witsat is using for P E R E R report that they've been working on for a year and a half to create a good.
Okay.
What is that? I'm getting there.
Yeah, okay.
I'm getting there. Gosh, you guys. Why do you think we have these work sessions?
So, I'm going to get it.
So, the document that they're working on, the abbreviations, P E R E R.
I think you're adding too many.
I don't think I am, actually.
We've called it a P E R forever.
P E R, anyway. It, it's a report that globalizes all the deficiencies in the city. And a lot of them are wrapped around water and sewer accounts, or water and sewer services. And what they're doing is they're building this big report for us so that when we go out for large, um, service improvements. Let's say when our sales, our half percent sales tax gets approved, and we're gonna go after some additional money. We have our entire report of the whole city. Everything is logged. We know every inch of water and sewer lines and what's going on with all of them, where they are. Everything's catalogued. So we can say for certain all of this section has to be replaced and why. So, this is, um, a summary of those lines that are camered. And then the company's reports. And some pictures of all of those lines, too.
Yeah, they look.
Fun to look at. Well, this, and this was very useful for Mike's, um, department because there was that deficiency he talked about in the last meeting. On Carlson that needed to get fixed right away. Without having those lines camered, we wouldn't have known that.
Yes. Yeah. There's, what if you, there.
And this is not the whole town?
No.
No.
No, this is. What? A thirty second of town?
Yeah.
Maybe.
And, and Witsat strongly recommended that the whole time.
This is all clay tile?
Just about, just about everything on there is clay tiles. There's chunks. Little bits here and there. And you can tell right away when you're looking at photos.
Right.
Yeah, when you see clay tile, clay tile, and then a chunk PVC, and then more clay tile, it's because that was broke at one point. They patched it in. And this goes back to, again, this is something that I struggle to explain to people once in a while. Our road conditions, I mean, I know it, trust me, I know it. Our roads are terrible, but we can't put. Two to three hundred thousand dollars on the top side of the road when we've got five hundred thousand dollars that needs to be fixed underneath. You know, you're gonna lay that new road down. And then next winter, when it decides that it wants to be forty below for two weeks straight, and we blow a water main, now we get to rip up a three hundred thousand dollar top. You know, it's, it's a nightmare for me, in all honesty. It really is. It's, it's a round and round vicious circle, and it just is what it is until this all comes into play. I mean, I've been working on this since I started here. Two and a half years ago. I've been slowly, I mean, videos, documents, measurements, the GIS stuff that we brought online this summer to try to help us through this. I mean, it's, it's been quite the project. I have no clue when the end is in sight. But it's been.
This is information that is extremely useful. And I know it's just information at this point, but.
Yeah, for you guys, you know, it's.
You're paying for it anyway if you have some, that's, you have to find out why.
Somehow I have to try to figure out a way in the upcoming years to find money to keep cameraing. And really figure everything out in town sewerwise. I mean, obviously, I can't camera water mains. They're pressurized. It doesn't really work. So, there's some guesswork on some of the water main around town, too, that. We don't know where it is, what it is, just that it's there somewhere. So, it's all a part of this big project. So if we do go after France.
Yeah.
We have all this documentation.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. It'll help. It's one of those things that'll help not just us now. But whoever is.
But it's, it's something that I.
You know, coming in behind us.
That hopefully, I mean, the, the city of Bagley over there has been doing a tremendous amount of work. If any of you have been through there lately. I don't know where they're finding their money at, but we gotta figure it out. Because the amount of underground that they've put in and pavement on the top, there's no way their city can afford it. So, there's, there's money out there somewhere. We have to find it, and we have to use this information to get it. I, I'm at the point where I'm about to, because I have no clue how they've been able to do what they put in this summer, and I hear that they're doubling it next summer. So, where it came from, I don't know.
I guess, I. I know.
Yeah, they're redoing almost the entire infrastructure of town over there. Which is the predicament that we're in here, basically. So. At some point, I've actually been meaning to go over and talk with their head of public works and figure out what's going on there. They'll take any help I can get. It ain't that far over there.
Fifty miles.
Yeah.
To Bagley, in here? I didn't think it was even that far.
Yes.
It's faster though, all the way to the.
Yeah, oh yeah. By far. Any questions on any of that? Were the videos attached to that you emailed to them? Okay, so you guys were able to see some of it?
Yeah.
What you could see?
Yep.
Before the roots stop.
Couldn't pass.
Yes. That, where that is, in case you guys didn't know, is over by the clinic. It's in front of the clinic where all those tree roots are.
And that's, that's been an issue in the past.
Next.
Done it since, so they really, they, they got through a lot of roots. A lot of root systems, so plus the work that was done in the summer, I think.
Yeah, and next year we'll probably go in there and have the roots cut out. If, again, we can find the money somewhere sitting in there.
Does that means that sewage is leaking into our ground?
No. It, it sounds like it should be. If you look, now those, those root balls, if you look at those videos. Appear, the roots appear thicker and bigger than they actually are when you're inside that pipe is like this, you know? Those roots are so fine when they come through there at first. I mean, they're, they're as thin as one of your pieces of hair. So they're just sneaking in and as they sneak in. And then they start to get that water and pull that water, they actually thicken up. It's goofy and they form a seal, really. So they're intrusive and they suck for us. But they do kind of seal it up so that where they came in at, water can't go back up.
But what about like the missile?
Well. Again, in, in proper. When it, when, when your sewer is working properly, you have the slope there and you shouldn't have. Water really in that pipe other than it's traveling through. So you might get a little. But there again, that's where the, the soil compaction outside of the pipe. A lot of that is, again, we have a lot of clay in this area, which. For this purpose, I will say, is kind of nice. Other than that, clay sucks. But it's packed right up against that pipe and that clay, if you've ever worked with it, and you guys know, you, you can take that stuff, throw it over a one inch hole and hold it there, it'll hold water back. So as far as sewage leakage, I don't see anything on these worry about. But yes, you've got misaligned pipes, you've got cracked pipes, you've got roots and pipes. You've got, what, I think there's one or two service laterals that come in and were never trimmed, they couldn't go by, I think. In this video, if I remember right, otherwise I've, I've looked at so many videos lately.
Now you can see where it protrudes into the.
Where, where their lateral taps in and they never trim, yep, yep, those are. Those are a pain because solids will come down, so the paper will come down and it'll cling on to that and then it just starts to grab more and more and more. And then ultimately, when you try to clean it, you can't clean past that either. You're caught on that too, so. Lots of stuff that should have been caught when it was put in years ago, lots of stuff that should have been put in, I believe.
And that's why in the last couple of years when we have new homes and stuff go in, we need to make sure that what works is there. When those laterals are put in so that they're putting the level of what we want it to be, so we don't have that. A lot of places in the past, they just do it and then they cover it back up and there's no inspection or there's no even, yeah.
Right, there's no nothing, it was just done. Yeah, we did it. All kinds of fun stuff.
So the last thing I have in new business is just the um offices of state auditors two thousand twenty three report. I know, I think I emailed this to you guys. Before it came out, I figured I just put it on the agenda in case there was any great conversation that wanted to be done. Um, see that Black Text listed, you know, ultimately, of course, in table five, I think it's page seventeen. But they're show on there and this is a really good, useful piece of information. I know it's a lot of data, but um the state auditor puts it out so that. Everybody in the state has a good understanding of what liquor operations do to their communities, what they can do, um why they're there. Cause I know there's always big conversation about that. Um, it's also a really good reminder that. Um, when you have privatized businesses that want to be able to do off sale in their community, why we don't want that. Now, we're not against that kind of business, but when you do that, you take that away for, from the reason municipal liquor stores would put. An active state app and, you know, provisionally. Um, there's, there's some cities and which is listed, I mean, we just talked about earlier, where they put, you know, hundreds and thousands of dollars to their um city. Every year. And then there's some that are struggling. But it's really important for the public to understand. It's not just small towns, but a lot of them. Towns of less than three thousand people. Um, what I always find interesting to note are the ones, um, they call out. Um, the cities that may have had a deficiency in the years prior. And uh I always kind of keep my eye out for those just to compare where we are to them. They also list how many. Um, there's, we're not the only city that has on and off sale. Some are off sale, but that's always very interesting to read too. So a lot of this is just. This data. If, you know, you have a municipal that has a loss, um, it's supposed to have a public hearing. And last year on paper, it may look like we had a loss, but because we budget our transfers. And the building improvements we had budgeted to do, you take away those building improvements, our municipal didn't have a loss in two thousand twenty. So it's, it's an actual complete loss of that. But I know a lot of people be like. Well, why don't we have a public hearing? I'm like, well, you're not, you're not regulated by statute to do it unless it's a loss. So, yeah, you can see there's a couple of. You know, Big Falls is on there. They're pretty welcome to us. Little Fork is in here too.
City of Big Falls also has other. Issues.
Yeah, and ours, it does.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Um. Yeah, I don't know if anybody had any questions since this is up to you guys before. One of the things that I really like to do because I don't consider myself a really competitive person, but I like to look at the pages where they rank. Your liquor stores compared to everybody else in the state. So I like to make sure of that and it's ranked by volume and. And uh what you do in sales, I like to see where we are compared to everybody else, because we're not really big liquor store, but. You know, a lot of contributing factors provide, you know, the sales that we have. And that kind of. You put some of those. Uninformed statements to bed. When you can show them the numbers and compare them, compare us to other locations. You know, um, when people say we don't, we don't make enough, we shouldn't be there, we shouldn't be in that business. Well. We're there for a reason. We all know that here. That's all I have for new business to you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, my only question, number five, Max from the H R A level. Is at the last meeting, you were going to reach out to that gentleman that was interested in that.
I did.
Piece of property. And I guess I was just looking for follow up on that.
If there was a, I'll, I'd have to convince him to put it in writing.
Okay.
They need to do that.
Okay.
And I figured there was something that would probably happen.
Right.
Because I don't. I really don't see the, the value of us holding a. Market, estimated market value of thirty one hundred dollars. I don't know what. Like the great offer would be, I mean, if you could get. Four thousand dollars for it. I think.
Probably was that again?
The one all the way at the end of Fourth Street.
From the drop off.
Oh, good, sure.
So. Because it's not taking any.
I have an update from the uh last meeting I went to on Thursday from the library, regional library. Their surplus funds. Yes.
Oh, oh.
So, um, they are coming back to the city. However. Settle down.
Follow me sixty three grand, dang it.
Sixty five, six, six eighty three to be exact. Now. It needs to be spent. Um, and this is verbatim what they said. For the good of the library.
No problem.
Okay. Um, now it needs, you need to identify what you want the money for or the meaning.
Okay.
Um, for the good of the library, what, what, how much funds you're asking for, for that particular, whatever you're doing.
Okay.
Um, it means city council pool.
Okay.
And then. It's taken, I would take it to them and they would. As well.
Okay. So basically, what I'm hearing is we need to find out how much money we want to put into that building, because I know where that building needs rentals. Get some estimates. Put it in the form of a resolution, asking for that amount of money.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm still not at the library. I don't even know what you need or, or what, what is gonna, you know, benefit the library.
I know they want to redo the front, the, the deck, the back deck, the, the front steps.
Emergency door. There's a lot of stuff that needs to get done. Flooring needs to be new. The bathrooms need improving.
I'd bring it to the ladies at the library at the old one and see what they need.
Absolutely, but I wanted to share, I, I, I talked to Kelly about it, not her, no, that they were gonna, you know, let up those funds. But, um, but that's to hit you down, yes. Um, so Kelly is aware.
Okay.
Um, they asked me to bring it to us and I, that's why I'm doing that. Um, I have no idea. I mean, I was just like, wow, I.
Yeah, that's great.
I get to, I do one meeting, you know, and bring out back all this great news, but I don't know how to proceed as far as figuring out what you guys.
Well, we had a really good meeting in the spring when Nick first brought us to the council. Um, regardless of where that meeting ended up, because it was kind of a free for all. I think the, the really important thing is, is that. We narrow down as a city what that building needs.
And is it building adequate for the library? I don't know. It seems small when I go in there. I feel like I'm.
It is small, but the problem is is that. Adding on to it is going to be a challenge, I think, for sixty five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I don't, like I said, I have no idea.
You know, if we're willing to do some serious improvements to it and save some labor like it, and guys. We did interior, we could spend that money very useful, very, very well.
So they, they are aware of it, um. It was, I had met with them on Tuesday and then I met with the regional library on Thursday, so it was kind of flip flopped, so. Um, but I got a call to Kelly right away and let her know that she could start a last story. Maybe she already had one. I wasn't sure.
Um, I can send everybody out the recap of that meeting that we had in spring, but.
Until, I can tell you off the top of my head, most of it is that needs to be done.
What was there, uh, why, why did you hiding it? I was gonna ask about it.
You know what? My guess is that they finally figured out they could.
Yeah.
Um, I think they had to hold on to whatever extra surplus they had. I'm guessing it came from wages, they're not working or I don't know where all this, everybody had a lot of surplus. So I don't know where it came from.
There's a lot of speculation, I think. What you saying, Nick, of where it came from?
I mean, there were some that had way more than this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I, I was like, whoa, am I hearing this right?
Yes, we started talking about the bigger library.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Yeah, it was maybe like eight hundred thousand? Yeah.
I'm gonna ask them to do when I was there to.
To donate to us? The front door needs to be replaced. The front handicap ramp absolutely needs to be replaced. Those two off the top of my head are gonna take. A pretty decent chunk of money. That, that handicap ramp. In all honesty, the wood needs to be taken away. If we're gonna continue to keep the library where it is, it should be a concrete ramp over there. That needs to be. Right.
So I know that the shingles were redone in sixteen.
I want to say it's, it's, the roof line is pretty good, the siding, I think, is pretty good. What little there is for windows in there, I think, are pretty decent. I'd have to double check. Um, like Max stated, that. Emergency door, if we're gonna call it that, that side door needs to be addressed.
That is, you can't have an emergency door that goes out to a.
Well, it, it goes out to a railing.
Goes out to a railing.
Yeah.
You're trying to get out of the building.
Yeah. Kind of a goofy deal there. And that rear deck, we need to decide. I, I think it just needs to go away.
Yep.
If we're gonna do something, maybe we can cut some of the hill out and put a patio in there or something for them to have their events, maybe.
A storage facility for them, more than just a little temporary. Building in the back probably wouldn't be out of sorts to ask, but I don't know if that means adding on or.
Yeah, because it would have to be climate control and everything from books.
Um, um, then you're looking at something that you're gonna continue to pay for after that money is spent, right? But.
How long have they been putting their book on, man?
Ten. Well, those are, you have the donated books that get sold.
Yeah.
They made, or this.
But like Mike and I have talked about the restrooms, you know, in the past, and that storage room where the utilities are. That should not be a storage room, not with all the utilities they have in there. You're not supposed to put anything in front of electrical panel three feet in front of it. And they stocked that room full of stuff.
Oh, yeah, they can't do that. Fire marshal.
So. I mean. As, as much as I realize they're within a restriction of space, I mean. I'm in the mind, just like we did here in city hall, for even a revamp of where everything's located on the floor.
Yeah.
They don't need as much space for their owner as they have. They can add more books if it was, if it was laid out different.
Pretty big area.
The entryway, well, the entryway's got, you know, I mean, you need to be able to get a, a wheelchair three sixty, but. I think there's a lot of dead space in that building that is not being used adequately.
Well, there's, there's an incredible.
Right.
And it would be, it would benefit that library.
A lot.
I think you could gain a lot of space on those bathrooms there too. There's a ton of dead space, so. Whatever, don't get me started. There's rocking chairs in the bathroom, so. Yeah, there's tons. It's just not.
It's something.
It's quiet time.
To the bathroom stall, though. I can see, I could see having a nursing room.
Yep.
But to have it set up the way it is.
It's just, yeah, the bathrooms.
Yep, they had talked about a small meeting room of some kind. I don't know if that's possible or not, but. I know the main things for sure are the door and the handicap ramp and the exit door.
Well, that's good, man.
That's excellent, yes.
Nick went there and he came back all the time and goes.
Nick couldn't get anything on. Said send the right person.
Oh, that was fabulous news. Thank you, Lori.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
Second. Second.
I'm just, I'm ready to go, I say.
I am too.